City Council Work Session to Order, being 3:04 PM, October 8th, Year of Our Lord 2024. Item Two invocation will be given by Councilmember Thompson. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily. Councilman?
Heavenly Father, be with us this day as we, as we go about our daily chores for the city of Odessa in this council work session. Be with all the citizens of Odessa. I pray there was no serious harm out on our 20th afternoon. Pray for the, all the citizens in Florida as they get ready for another horrible storm. Be with them and keep them all safe. Guide our decisions today for the benefit of the citizens of Odessa to make it a better community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Item Three, Discuss the Issuance of Requests for Proposals for On-Call Electrical, HVAC Plumbing, General Contractor and Landscape Services. Ms. Burns?
Yes. Good afternoon. So, we will be issuing for Request for Proposals for On-Call Electrical, HVAC Plumbing, General Contractor and Landscaping Services that will be used for CDBG projects, general facility maintenance and claims. The selected contractors will be placed on an on-call list, allowing the city to enter into contract with those firms for the services as needed. The initial term will be one year with an option to renew for an additional year. When the on-call lists are approved, a not-to-exceed amount will be established per service as well as per contractor per year to ensure equity. As you might remember, we previously issued RFPs for electrical and HVAC plumbing services, but we didn't receive any bids. And after receiving feedback from local contractors, it was discovered that our current insurance requirements posed a burden to small businesses. Because of this, we have decreased the insurance requirements to align with HUD's objective of encouraging the use of small and minority-owned businesses while still maintaining the appropriate protection for the city. And just overall, this on-call process will save the city time and money.
We may want to make a note for the audience watching at home that Number Three, Discuss the Warning Police, this is a mix-up. This is not the Number Three that we're discussing. This is on-call services. It's on the, it's on the televisions in before us.
Okay.
Yeah. We just want to make sure that-
So, there's a discrepancy of what we have?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. This Number Three does not coincide with-
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Christine is talking about now.
Discuss the Warning Police Department, yes. So, that-
And you can thank Joe Tucker for pointing that out there.
Okay. Do we have that? Is that item on here?
No, sir.
Oh, it's an old one. Okay. I was gonna say, I'm not seeing it. I don't know if my glasses is that dirty that I'm not seeing it. Okay. So, this is not, what you're seeing on the screen is not a item on the agenda at all. Not on Three and not anywhere on here. So, that's an error. So, once again, let me restate for the record. Item Three, we are discussing the issuance of Request for Proposals for On-Call Electrical, HVAC, Plumbing, General Contractor, Landscape Services. Ms. Burns, go ahead and continue.
Oh, that was the end of my presentation.
Okay. So, let me ask this question. So, what we're seeing here in the summary, is this a reflection of what was, what was before or what is the adjustment? On any project of 10,000 or less, commercial general liability requirement will be 500,000 per occurrence and 1 million aggregate for occurrence for builder's risk policy in regard. Is this the new one?
This is the new, yes, with the decreased insurance requirements.
What was, what was the prior?
So, previously, or our standard insurance requirements are 2 million per occurrence. So, we have decreased that for, as you mentioned, projects under $10,000 in value. It'll be just 500,000 per occurrence with a million-dollar aggregate. And then, if it's over $10,000, we have also decreased it to a million dollars per occurrence with a $2 million aggregate.
This will take effect when?
This is just for these on-call services. So, this is-
You've got to adjust your insurance policy. You've got to get an endorsement on your insurance policy to be effective when?
So, we are planning to get this out tomorrow. The issue the bids tomorrow, and then we would bring that on-call list to the City Council the first meeting in November, so November 12th.
So, say, we're gonna send out the bid. What's, what's the timetable of the area where they can put bids in? And how we advertise? I know we have to advertise in the OA.
Yes, we have to do-
For a period of how long?
Couple times. Twice.
Twice. For a total of what? 30 days or 60 days?
I think it's just 30.
Is it 30?
Yeah, false procurement laws.
Well, and that's why we're not gonna get any much bids as far as, nobody goes to, to that section. So, I mean, that, that, that's not being fictitious. That's just a fact. So, how other ways can legally can we get the word out that we're accepting bids for this? I mean, legally, we have to do that on, on-
In the OA, that's our legal requirement. I believe we also post it on our website.
Okay.
But, of course, if you don't know where to look.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to, um, all right. That's the only questions I've got. Counsel? Any, any questions?
So, how are we gonna, these are for on-call services, correct?
Yes, these are for on-call services.
So, how are they budgeted?
I'm sorry?
How are they budgeted?
Budgeted, so this will be budgeted through each individual department's budget. So, they will have to have the budget available to use those funds.
Or they'll have to come back to council requests.
For appropriation. That's correct.
Which would be one-time?
Yes.
Request.
Okay. But, if, if this is a cha, is it, were they aware that you were gonna do this so they could factor that into their budget?
Yes. Well, so, they've already had the budget. This is just streamlining the process. So, instead of having to go out for three quotes for anything over $1,000, they can go through this on-call list. So, they already have the budget built in.
So, they've got that money. Okay.
Yes, yes. And we work closely with Community Development for CDBG projects, AVE, with risk management for any claims that potentially come up, as well as building services for any city facility projects.
And Christina, you may want to tell them about the Request for Proposals. The vendors already put those in, that they basically wanted to be a part of this on-call list.
Yes.
Which is, in my mind, it's kind of like a Rolodex, you know? First plumber doesn't want to come out and help, so I call the second plumber.
Yes.
Third plumber, fourth, and go on down the line. So, it's basically to streamline.
Yes. And also, you know, it gives an opportunity for businesses if they want to do business with the city. This is the time that they can submit their qualifications.
Makes sense. Anyway, okay.
Christina, I was just gonna thank you. There's a balance between lower insurance barriers and maintaining that risk management. So, I appreciate your work on that.
Yes. No, and I worked really closely with, or I would say I, and NIRA with Community Development was also very involved, but with AVE as well to make sure that these insurance requirements were, were covering us appropriately.
Yeah. Because a lot of times, these vendors won't come do these little jobs. So, that's what we're trying to do. The little jobs, that they don't want to come bid out.
Okay. So, the proposal schedule here is issuance tomorrow, October 9th. Deadline for questions is 17th. Response, submit questions is Friday, the 18th. And then, sealed proposals are due in by, due date is Thursday, October 24th. It's kind of funny. I just had a conversation with someone about this today. They must have seen this. Counsel, any other further questions on this item? Item Three is proposed. Do, are we seeking a consensus to move forward, or is this just information?
I'm, I'm just want to make sure we're gonna be meeting our requirements of the deadline time. Again, you said twice we have to advertise and within a 30-day period?
Yes. And purchasing is already on top of those deadlines.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes. No, we will make sure we meet all the legal requirements.
Are we seeking a consensus? Or it's just a point of information? Okay.
And, and the actual on-call list to approve the firms that get selected will come back to you November 12th.
Okay. Okay. Well, move forward, Counsel? All right. Moving forward, we've got the consensus. Item Four, Discuss the Annual Purchase of a Side Load Refuse Containers with Half-Metal Lead Kits and a Toter of 96-Gallon Cart. Mr. Rodriguez?
Afternoon, Mayor. Counsel?
I say consensus on me. Go for it. We're good. It is, it is a refuse truck. Let's do it.
Well, it's that time of year for the annual purchases of roll-off dumpsters, the metal dumpsters you see in the alleys and the carts as well, the roll-off carts. Just asking the Counsel to consider the annual purchase of metal dumpsters and roll-out carts. We'll be purchasing at least 200 or 200 of the three-yard metal dumpsters, 69 of the four-yard metal dumpsters from Roll Off USA out of Durant, Oklahoma, and 4,368 of the 96-gallon carts out of Statesville, North Carolina, will be shipped out of Del Rio, Texas. These annual purchases are to replace containers that have been reached deteriorated conditions and/or to add to new accounts due to growth in population. All expenditures are budgeted within the maintenance of other equipment line item account of Solid Waste Department. Total expenditure will be $425,000, $427.
Is this purchase taking place, well, we're in the new budget. I don't know what I'm doing, but, you know, it's already October. Yeah, never mind. Retract, retract the question.
Jesse, how many metal dumpsters did you say?
200 of three-yard metal dumpsters.
Okay.
And 69 of the four-yard metal dumpsters, another one you usually see in the apartment complexes, the four-yard.
A little bit taller.
A little bit taller, yes, sir.
And they still fill them up.
Yes, sir.
And the 96-gallon carts, are those like the ones in the newer developments?
Yes, sir. The curbside, curbside. We have some there during the alley, in the paved alleys. We have some of those. And, and the reason I'm ordering this much is due to the growth, of course. North 100 Street is growing rapidly up in Mission Dorado. And plus, we're also planning to convert some of the three-yard subdivisions, if you could say, in the future. So, I want to have enough in inventory to, to accomplish that.
What are you, what are you doing with, I'm sorry. What are we doing with the, are we doing replacement also?
Yes, sir.
In this roll-out? So, what are you doing with the replacements? Rehabbing them?
On, on the, on the roll-out cart, yes, if we can, if it's possible. If not, if not, we just have to dispose.
Then you'll just vulture them whatever you can and then, then sell, sell off the metal?
Yes, sir.
Did we ever solve that where the, the stuff that you sell off, that money we were back now into general fund, but back into solid waste?
Oh, it goes into the scrap metal fund.
Scrap metal.
Scrap metal fund.
So, they, we reestablished that for solid waste, like it was in the past?
Not that I know of, sir.
Okay. There's just something we still need to-
I mean, it just goes to scrap metal fund. Now, I don't know who, if I have access to it, Solid Waste have access to it. I don't know.
I knew there was issues in the past, why that was changed.
It was going to the general fund, I believe, or to another fund.
So, Mr. Rodriguez, well, I just, seems like we ordered these just yesterday, but I know the growth has caused a lot of issues. But, when was the last, didn't we, didn't we order them the last six months or eight months?
We ordered, if, if, if funding is available, and I'm gonna order a little bit more, just to keep the inventory on, going, on the roll-out carts, the curbside.
Right.
Those are, could we put about 100 a month sometimes?
Really?
75 to 100 a month, yes, sir.
The replacements are new?
New.
New.
And then, some customers are requesting second and third carts, up to a limit of three carts.
Right.
So, that's, that's where, uh-
I'm just saying, it seemed like we just addressed this not long ago. I guess it's an ongoing cycle.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you put a limit on how many they can have per household?
Uh, three.
Three?
On the roll-out cart, on the curbside.
Yeah.
For the, for the simple, for the fact that we don't have recycling, curbside recycling. So, we give them an additional cart, up to two additional carts.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, so, for the containers, particularly for that roll-off USA, can you refresh me? I think I asked that a long time ago. What's the expected lifespan that you see for those containers?
Pending, Councilman. Pending, I know the, the landscaping grass tends to eat them up, the bottoms. So, we have to replace the bottoms, you know? Yeah. So, five to eight years.
Five to eight years.
Yeah. We've had some that have been there pretty longer than that. But, because of landscape, it's not going into dumpsters. They tend to last a bit longer. Yeah. So, that's why we encourage grass clippings to go directly to any facility or any kind of brush.
Sure everybody's complying, right?
Oh, yes.
Guilty.
Counsel, any other questions? All right. We have a consensus. Move forward.
Give it to me.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Item Five, Discuss the Gallagher Human Resource Compensation Practice Outcome for the Classification and Compensation Pay Study. This is providing insight where the city's existing standard compensation schedules are compared to today's market and comparable entities.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor. Counsel. Thank you for allowing us to come before you. We wanted to share, provide you all with an update of where we are with regard to the compensation study that we've been working on, amongst other things. I have to applaud my colleagues. They've been extremely involved in the process, encouraging their employees to, to get involved in the process as well. So, Gallagher is coming out today to, you know, explain what we've been doing, how things are going and where we stand at the moment. And so, I want to invite Michael Burton. He's the Senior Principal. I'm giving him a new title. It's actually Principal Director. And then-
That's fine. As long as it comes with less responsibility and more money.
Right. And then Catherine Thorpe, she's the Senior Consultant. We've been working closely with them since this initiative was approved. I'm just gonna turn it over to them so I don't steal their thunder, and we'll be here to answer your questions.
City Mayor, Council Members, thank you for having us. All right. Thank you. That's perfect. My name is Michael Burton. I'm a Principal Director for Gallagher in the Central Region. Thank you for engaging Gallagher, working with AVE and her team. It's been a, it's a great opportunity for us, and then hopefully we can provide the services and the knowledge that you guys need to move forward and looking at your compensation and classification programs. I'm gonna introduce Catherine Thorpe, who's our Senior Consultant. She's gonna walk through a couple of these slides, and then I'm gonna actually talk about some of the findings that we have currently that we've discovered so far, preliminary, and then we'll have a lot more data for you on the next meeting, I believe, is on the 22nd. So, we should be ready for that. All right. So, Catherine.
Thank you all for your time today. You should have a copy of the presentation that we're gonna walk through. So, we'll go, I'm not gonna read the slides to you. That would just be boring for everyone. So, realistically, we're gonna go through, this is just the agenda, kind of the overview of the project, the goals, the management, how the administration of this process works, how our work plan goes, the timeline, how we collect the data and what we do with that, those sources, the PDQ process that is actually closing right now with all the city employees. And we'll, as Michael said, we'll go over some of those preliminary findings, and then we'll have open discussion. We want to make sure you have plenty of time to ask questions. Of course, ask questions as we go through, no problem. Just for a little background on Gallagher, the organization, the company itself is around for almost 100 years. In the public sector and higher education space particularly, we have had a concentration in the human resource practices there for 40 years. We do have offices nationwide. We do have a lot of clients in the public sector. That is one of our specialties that our practice works on. We have a lot of cities that we're working with, like Odessa, to go through these compensation and classification projects, and several of them also in Texas. As I told in three weeks ago when I was here doing the employee meetings, you can probably hear, I am from Texas. I'm located about an hour north of Austin. But, in addition to the compensation and classification process that we're doing, we also had our benefit, a different benefits group work on that with you all last month. We go through executive compensation, any kind of benchmarking, succession planning, progression planning, job evaluations, anything, anything that you need in the HR space, we can help with. So, our team here, as you can see, Michael, you've already met, and myself, Larry is, has also been here. He's visited Odessa twice, doing some of those information sessions with me. We're both the project managers and the senior consultants. Because the project is so large, this team is quite a bit larger than a normal process would go. It's about double because we have an accelerated timeline that AVE has put on us to make sure we have some information for you all this month. Then also here, you can see who we've been working with. AVE is the primary project lead that we've worked with, mostly her and Chrissy. And now, we'll go into the management and administration. What this does is it's Project Manager, our job basically, is to make sure that we're coordinating all activities with our team and all the deliverables timely and making sure we're staying on the same page with AVE and what the city of Odessa is needing. We have regular status meetings. We're currently meeting weekly internally and also with AVE and Chrissy to go through any of that. We go through regular employee communications. That's what those onsite visits were. Three weeks ago, we met with, or gave everyone the opportunity to come out and hear the information about the compensation and classification study and the PDQ process that we were launching. And then, we've also had stakeholder meetings like this here today and any additional that we need in the future. We like to include this slide because we feel it's important to make sure we understand what we're going through in this process, what the project is about. It's about making sure that the jobs are leveled correctly, making sure we have the information we need-
Bless you.
Bless you.
Excuse me.
On these jobs to make sure we're aligning them correctly with the comparative groups that have been identified. We want to make sure that any of the processes we recommend are easy to administer and to communicate and understand. We want to make sure that everything is also in line with best practice and compliant as far as any kind of legal perspective. Things that we're not gonna do, or we would never recommend, would be any kind of reduction in pay. That's not anything that we would recommend. It's not a staffing study determining staffing levels. It's not a, anything to design to reduce costs for the city or eliminate positions.
Can we just take one quick second? I don't know how you go back on that. So, that slide on that page is very important. When you engage Gallagher, we are, and when partnered with HR, we are, you're really, our specialty is your, your day-two consultants, right? A lot of other consulting firms will drop off a nice, pretty presentation and see you later. So, when we engage in this study, we use this slide, this is my favorite slide, to give to council members to, when we do a grassroots, because we really want to implement this information that we give you. And that's key. So, after we leave, you can actually take this information and actually apply it to your employees of the city. Okay? So, when we come into this, we really don't go into it with saying, hey, here's a strategy to reduce or increase pay. You may or may not be competitive with the market, and we'll make those suggestions and give you a way based off of number and affordability to actually attack those issues that we may or may not bring up. Okay? So, this is an important slide. I want to open it up. If you've got any questions on that of like what we're doing, or we can wait till the end?
Yeah, let's wait till the end, because I've got questions on all of four of these. I'm glad that you guys put this in, because-
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please.
So, this is really the work plan. It shows the different buckets that we are grouping collection into in the different parts of the study. The first is what we've been working on with AVE and her team since late June, early July. And that's just really getting all of the information we need to be able to start this study for the city of Odessa. And so, what that means is we've had meetings to determine what, what were the goals that the city was looking to accomplish with this. We collected all of your policy information, all of your census data at the employee level. So, we know exactly, you know, the employee's name, their job code, how long they've been with the city, how long they've been in that position, their current salary. Those are the bits of information we need to be able to market price that, which we'll get to. A little more information on that. And then, also, we could move it, we're moving into the compensation study piece, where that is, or well, the Position Description Questionnaire is the one thing that we're using to align, make sure, because some of the job descriptions may or may not be current. So, that's the employee's input, and it was the city's decision to offer the opportunity to every employee to provide that rather than have supervisors complete that information. This allowed all of the employees of the city of Odessa to have a voice and provide input into this study. We actually, we'll get to that, but we had, have had a fantastic response on that. That actually is closing as we speak. I think today is kind of the, the wrap-up of that PDQ process. Then, we get into the compensation study piece, and what that is, is collecting market data on that. We're looking at custom study information or custom survey. We look at published survey sources, all of the things of that nature to determine where your compensation aligns to the market. And then, from that, we'll go into the classification piece. And so, it's critical to have the correct job information for that so that we can classify those jobs correctly, make sure they're in the correct grade, make sure that we're positioning those correctly within your structure when that comes about. And then, the job description piece is gonna come a little bit later in the year. And the PDQ process that we have gone through will aid us in that, in where we'll make sure that the city has updated job descriptions and that they're current, they're completely relevant to the market and current best practices, and that they're accurate with all the information needed. And then, of course, the final piece will be those final recommendations and deliverables, which is, you know, the, the in-depth detail in the weeds perspective, so to speak, of the study itself and all the parts that we've gone through. So, the timeline, like I said, this is, it's a, it's kind of a fluid thing. Like I said, it's subject to change, and it has because the timeline was moved up a bit for the preliminary findings because of this meeting and also the next. But, we did start collecting information, as I said, in June. The compensation and classification, they overlap, as you can see. And then, that job description piece is that last part that's gonna start at the end of the year and carry us into the next, early part of next year. So, the data collection, one thing that's important to clarify is what a benchmark job is. That's the main thing that we're looking for. It has to be a job that is 80% comparable to another organization, whether that's the city of Austin, city of Midland, any of those places. It's gotta be an apples-to-apples comparison is basically what we're looking for when we're talking about a benchmark job. Now, the city of Odessa does have 381 unique jobs. Not all of those are considered a benchmark job because there could be certain things that are unique to Odessa that you don't have in other cities.
Real, real quick, let me ask that question. Give me the definition, what you call unique title, job titles, because my imagination's going crazy.
Well, unique just means an individual job title.
Okay.
Different from the rest. So, that would be-
Arrest from the city or arrest from across the board when we're looking at job descriptions in general in the market?
No, these are, these are the descriptions, the titles that the city currently has in place.
Okay.
You have 381 different job titles covering all of your employees.
And then, you said benchmarked employees.
What that means is the benchmarks, like I said, 292 of those, we, or is that right?
Yes, 292.
292 of those we were able to benchmark, and that's what we were saying. We were able to find a comparable job in another organization, whether that's a city or a county or the other organizations that we got the information from in the custom survey and also the published. So, that is a significant number, and that's what those two charts, charts-
Okay.
Charts show you.
Yeah.
I've had too much caffeine. I gotta go somewhere.
Yeah. So, 91% in the bench on the employees and 9% not benched. Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So, that's, that's huge. That's actually a very high number and-
It's a good number.
A higher number than we typically see. So, you know, that's really a good thing that we were able to align those positions. So, we have different sources that we use for this information. So, the first, this is the published survey sources, right? So, this is, as Gallagher, one of the things that we can bring to you to benefit you is we have a huge receptacle of published survey data that we have access to. These are all, it goes through basically what they need to be. It needs to be something that's conducted consistently, like on an annual basis. It needs to be not self-reported, things of that nature. And these, of course, are all very large published survey houses. They're the biggest ones typically in the country, Willis Towers Watson, Mercer Comp Data and ERI. Now, what ERI allows us to do is put a geographic index when needed. So, if we were not able to find something, say in West Texas, exact job match, we might have had to go to Houston or potentially another state. But, with ERI, it lets us put a geographic index to make sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison to Odessa specifically. So, the custom survey, so this is one thing that we did, were able to do for Odessa. We worked with AVE to determine what jobs, and I think we had about 65 of the jobs that she identified as particularly hard to fill, or that we, she just really wanted additional information around that was very important to the city. So, what that custom survey allows us to do is it lets us kind of hand-pick comparator organizations, whether that's based on the same type of services offered, like the city of Odessa has, size, population, things of that nature. We did go with 45 organizations. 28 of them were government agencies. We also had some oil and gas because that's relevant here in Odessa, obviously, as you know. And then, there were some, of course, medical and other, because some of the positions that we're looking at here are cross-industry. So, it's not necessarily a job that's gonna be only found in a city. So, that's why those other organizations are important to look at. One thing we did was we sent that out. We allowed that to be open. I think we, three weeks, we sent it one. We had three weeks for them to all provide their responses, and we received a 34% response rate, which is actually very high. If we get 25%, that's, that's pretty good from our perspective of response percentage. Their incentive to do that is they will get a complimentary copy of just the custom survey piece, nothing else specific to this Odessa study. So, the PDQ process, this is what we were here three weeks ago going through presentations and describing this. And this is what we were talking about. This is the employee input into this study. It lets us get additional information about the jobs that they do directly. Each individual could complete it themselves, or they could do it as a group if they had the same job title, whichever was most convenient was offered up to them, whatever they would like to do. But, really, what this does is it's critical for us to be able to make sure we have the right information on the job to make sure, like I said, with all those market positions we talk about, if we don't have this information, it could be misaligned. So, this way- So this way also if the job description is, you know, maybe five, seven years old potentially, which is not uncommon, the job could have evolved and it could be a little bit different here in Odessa that they're doing in the day in, day out than what that job description was written as five years ago. So that lets us get that additional clarification. It'll, it's used for the classification piece and that compensation benchmarking in the market data, but it's also going to aid us in that third part of the process where we're redoing those job descriptions for you all. All right.
So.
I was like, I'm taking.
Yeah, take a breath, thank you, Kat.
I talk fast.
So let's talk about some of these preliminary findings that we've seen so far. And what's in front of you is kind of like our guidelines of kind of how we talk about things in the competitive market that we're going to present to you. So usually in consultant speak, highly competitive is around plus or minus five percent, right? So if you've got a hundred thousand dollar job and you're paying, you know, ninety-five thousand dollars or ninety, a hundred and three, you're considered highly competitive. If you're plus or minus ten percent, we go to say you're competitive. If you're plus or minus fifteen, we might say you might have a possible misalignment. Now, it depends on how you look at it. If they're fifteen percent below, that's a whole different message than someone that's fifteen percent high, right? There might be reasons, they might be in a job for many, many years or you're really just off the market. And then the last one, we got it in red there, that's significant misalignment. So that means that you're well over fifteen percent off of the market, right? So we had a discussion with your HR department to kind of figure out where our market should be, right? And what we're really looking at is trying to be hit around the fiftieth percentile, which that means that you're better than fifty percent in your market and you're not as good as the other half, fifty percent. Some cities might want to be in the seventy-fifth percentile. You want to be bleeding edge or figure out that, hey, we're only going to be twenty-fifth percentile. You don't need to be on the top end or anything, but here at Odessa, we decided that so far that we're going to sit right here at the, at the median. Next slide there. So what's on here is a really high level of preliminary findings and we did it just so we, we don't have everything ready to put in public record here, but we do have it at department levels and I have better detail. So this is a high level comparison of the departments and where they sit. So on your screen there, let's just take animal control, right? There's five employees there. So on average, right, if you compare that to the median, you're paying currently around eleven percent below the fiftieth percentile. Now, it could be that one or two employees are really, really low or one is kind of high. But in general, we can kind of hear, we talked to you at eleven percent below the market. You have some danger zones, let's say in finance, that group, you have nine employees there and you're technically as of today around twenty-two percent below the market. And that's in combination of our custom survey, which we talked to your neighbors, and the published surveys in which we looked at jobs that are local in the state and then also from outside of the state and then actually use the geographic difference to bring them home. So it's an apples to apples, what Kat talked about earlier. So again, this is kind of preliminary, what we'll do with this, once we finish off going at the individual level, which we have, then we start talking about the next stage is looking at the costing. What would it take you to bring your employees to either within acceptable range, right? It could be competitive, based on affordability and what the market is, how hard that job is to find. Then we'll start to look at compressions and all those dealings with, you know, next slide, so the departments there. So these are some of the other departments there. Some departments you're doing pretty well at, so in purchasing, you're relatively competitive in, your water waste collection. If we look at police and fire, I believe fire is also for the actual fire department, actual people climb ladders and put out fires, they're fine. We've, we've had to split them out. So the group that's like part of the administrative group is part in the administration cut, which we'll talk to about later. So what do we have, do we have anything else? So. Yeah, so at overall, this is, it's a number, it's percentages of percentages, depends on if you really want to talk about it. You're eleven percent below market, which isn't bad. It's still relatively competitive, but you definitely have some gaps that we need to address. I think now we have time to answer any questions. We kind of went through that at a pretty high level. Mr. Mayor, you said you had four questions earlier.
Yeah. Well, when we look at the market findings.
Sure.
Depending where you fall, start looking into the crowd. Everybody liked the, agreeable with the first bracket. In the middle, eh, but I know everybody out here liked home evaluations. You want those home evaluations where you're selling, but you don't want them when you're paying the taxes. So I know everybody's looking at that one to the far right. You say, this is where we need to be, I guarantee you that, which is fine. I mean, it's, it's understandable and I would be too. That's, that's exactly what I'm looking for. So, you know, when we look at the comparison mark, seventy-fifth market right there, you know, we, we knew we had a lot of adjusting to do, but it's really important and I, and I think you addressed a some of it. One of the things that we, and this is why I think, and I understand why you're saying this is one of the most important slides.
It is, sir.
Because this is what we wrestled with when we actually started going down this rabbit hole. We, my biggest concern was is two years ago, I don't remember how long, when we started doing this, I felt that it was futile for the reasons that we weren't adjusting what was, the elephant in the room. We are, we are so out of tune with our policies and procedures that we're still stuck in the eighties. And we, there's no sense in doing any analysis of salaries and compensation and benefit package. If we're not going to find out where we are in the competitive marketplace with our policies and procedures, we're not up to date. You know, we, we, we just weren't there and I felt that we were just throwing money, good money, down the drain because we still had the glaring problem, job levels inaccurate and inconsistent to find. So we knew that we've had that issue. So what is the mechanism to define where we're at as far as the levels of accuracy and consistency of those job descriptions? Now, you just identified, we have three hundred and eighty-one, right?
Unique titles, yes.
Unique times. So that's glaring to this right here. So what's the mechanism, what's the system? What, what are we doing? Are we doing comparisons across the city, just like you did? We identify what we could identify. That's where you went for twenty-eight government agencies and then you went with eight oil field. Then you went to medical and education. So the one thing I can think of, what pollinates in all four of those subcategories is office management. And, and a reason why I say, and I'm not going to name names here, but several years ago, more than a decade, fifteen years ago, there was a glaring, there was, the, the, the elected officials were handing out contracts. Now, remember the, the reason why we said we have to do it because we're going to lose people to the oil field. Well, there's certain positions that don't exist in the oil field that exist here and vice versa.
Right.
And so what's pollinated between, and, and you don't have to go into a lot of detail, but give me one job description between government and the oil field. Government and, and then, and then that go into medical. You know, is it all office related? Is it all administration? Is it finance?
A lot, yeah.
Comptroller.
Well, administrative roles absolutely are cross-industry, what we classify as that. Other things as well that are definitely be found in the oil field in the city are things like welders, some of your trade positions.
Okay.
So the thing too that we look at and the recommendations that we'll have, and we've already had some discussions because some supervisors have wanted to change some of the job titles. We've asked them to hold until we finish this study because that's one of the things too, we're going through and saying, okay, this, this title is accurate, but it's a little outdated. More common what we're seeing in the market, best practices are, are this type of titling. And it's important to do that and not necessarily have a unique title. We kind of joke, we don't want to have the, I mean, I'm a guru compensation, that's not my job title, right? You can't market price that. So you want to make sure that you're being current with what titling conventions are being used so that you're appropriately matching those jobs when we're looking at the salaries. Because if you don't have that title aligned correctly, then that's when things can get out of alignment.
I wanted to add, that's, you know, one of the things that we're talking about is trying to build a sustainable structure.
Yes.
So we, which is why we did put a stop on the request for changing job titles. Just because we want to be able to be thoughtful about what will look like in the next few years and are we able to manage whatever we change.
Are directors wanting to do that so they can be able to help facilitate the compensation and up that compensation? That's why they're doing that. Okay, that, and that's understandable. Because I know that one of the glaring issues has always been within the city is its classifications, employees and their entry positions. They're so outdated and when we, we start hearing what we found out about what's happening in our street department and why we have such a large deficit, which is glaring because it's reflective in the community for, because we're pushing these, this department and they're multi, they pollinate into different areas. And there's just not enough bodies to go around. But the thing is, when you look at the job description and the starting pay, I don't blame them. And what happened, he says, well, what does that matter every, as they go down, they're going to start getting raises. Yeah, but here's the thing is, we have to have the reclassification of that entry to be able to push them up at the entry level. Because what happens is that they start way down here, by the time they got to ten years, they should have started ten years ahead. I mean, if that makes sense. And so, and like I said, we haven't done this since what, pre nineteen ninety? It's twenty twenty-four. That's how far behind we are and it's just because this is just the way it's always been done.
And there's a lot more work that will be done. So we will be doing the classification study, that's coming next.
Good.
And then we're also, the last part of it will be job descriptions.
Good, good. So then you answered my, my, my question, a system that's easier to understand, Ms., you got that. Pollination procedures to keep the compensating compensation system to date and ethical. Okay, so we made the changes, we made the adjustments. What kind of percentage do you think that we'll be able to, to handle? And that gives a clear indication of what the compensation is going to be and what that budget impact's going to be. Let's say that we do that. What, what percentage of those jobs that we're going to change or align or reclassify? We got eight hundred and what, eight hundred and thirty-six and we're looking at nine percent. Best percentage that we're looking at and two, what is the system to make, make sure that we never fall back that we have, and the deficit we have right now? What are those, how do we answer those two questions?
That's a great question. I'm going to answer the second one first because that one's easier, the first one's a little harder. The, the governance that we're going to put in place, right, with your, with your HR system going forward is understanding, because we're also doing performance management as well. So there's a lot of other components.
Okay.
So again, Gallagher is your day two consultant. So with implementation, once we get everything set and it's sitting, everything's on wet cement, right? And then all of a sudden we leave with this the next day. The governance that has to be involved in is one, yearly, once every two or three years, doing a study to slightly over a couple of jobs to make sure that the classification that you set and the ranges of salaries that you put together is still available, are still up to the speed with the market. The only way you can stay with the market is if you go check it, what it is. If you don't check it, you'll never know. We'll also leave your HR group with a means of actually checking in between those years, one, two, three years. It's not like we disappear and then you can't do that. So having surveys available, you guys participating in surveys and you'll get data back, you'll help understand. And trust me, once you send out a custom survey, every other city's going to be firing custom surveys back and forth. So you'll get good data then. So it's really the best way of doing is having the right data, right? And that's what we'll provide and tools for Yvette and her team to actually get those data forward. Now, hopefully they answered that question, so that, that's the second question. The first part of that question is really understanding, once we do the PDQs and have the classification system, we want to set up a structure that allows for easy administration, but also easy to understand for your employees. Like animal control, we want to have a clear sight in the classification. So if you're, I don't know, dog catcher and then all of a sudden you're supreme dog catcher and then, you know, I met Council Jones, then all of a sudden you become city, city council, right? Like it, like there's a progression, so you can see where that thing is. And there should be pay ranges that go along with that. So we'll fight compression first, that's stage one. So really as the money, I can't answer like, hey, it's going to cost you four percent of your current salary right now. I, I can't do that today. I can give you a number, but it won't be right, right? So once we start to get all of our market data in, then we'll see based off of what your issues are and your affordability, we'll start giving you a plan of how you attack that. It could be this year, we just attack all your compression issues. Or those issues, like you said, where people are so below the market that you can't hire anybody, right? Or if we set the new, new hire rate at thirty bucks an hour, but everybody who's been here for twenty years is only making twenty-eight, right? Then we've got to adjust those people at least to the thirty, right? Without having a riot outside, right? So those are the type of things that we'll address. And then next year you might combine your new performance management system with those budget dollars. So now your manager's got performance management and the budget. So then you start to get better. So two or three years down the road, you won't really need Gallagher because you've got a good system, performance management. You understand how to get stuff from the market and get data back and then you're, for you. The goal of any compensation consultant is to have this thing run on its own in three or four years.
Okay, well, then that, that answers my, my fourth question. What are the comparables accompanying competitive and being equitable? So how I vision this, you know, going on in the future? Because in order to be able to keep these best, best practices in place, you have to have the percentage that's vigilant upon that. And so whether it's on a yearly or biannual, is that you're seeing this process with HR going in during the budget process with the council in the retreats. Because for as long as I remember, we've always done, there've been so many systems to trying to be, how we're going to do raises. And so it's what the budget allows. So that's always falling between three to four percent. What I'm imagining here is that we'll see some areas that will need a little bit more and some a little bit less. So if some areas may have to jump ten, some may have to just one or two, then in itself will create different type of tension. And, but the thing is, is that the data will be able to say, hey, look, this is comparative of what we're seeing. And because this happens in the private sector too. You know, for years in, in the engineering industry, you had guys that'd been there for twenty, thirty years that are making a certain amount and you got new people coming in and starting to write right below them and they got upset. They go, that took me thirty years. Well, yeah, because you started way down here. All your work after thirty years, you pushed the market up. So the ones that are benefiting are the young guys or, or men and women are coming in. So they're starting right there where you're about to jump off the plank, they're coming in. He goes, because of you, your dedication, your sacrifice. That's just the way it is. That's just the way it is. Because when I came into the job market, you know, when I was eighteen, I was making way more. Because when my dad was at my age, he was making a dollar twenty-five. It's just comparison, you know, but he was born in nineteen thirty and so, so, but a lot of people don't understand that. So that really answered a lot of my questions right there.
How about the idea of this being a part of the retreat?
Yes.
And that we're effectively planning? Because one of the primary things that we want to do is to take out the guessing, right? The feeling that someone has been underpaid for. So we want to be able to provide appropriate data to, to inform those decisions.
Well, yeah, yeah. Council, do you open up for questionings?
I've got one, one big question. There's got to be, I know you can't pull numbers out of the air, but you've got to have some sense, based on what I see right here. You have to have some sense of what it's going to take us. You're saying we're eleven percent deficient overall, or at least that's what I thought I saw. So just show your sense of it, because we, we all know the elephant in the room is the oil patch. And the guys that wait, the guys, our technical people, I'll call them technical people because I don't know what you call them, except that like wastewater treatment plant guys and gals and water treatment and those which are, you know, pretty sophisticated jobs inside of a blue collar job, you know, making twelve dollars an hour when they can go make twenty-five in the oil patch. So what percentage wise is it going to take us to keep those kinds of people? You know, we, we work really hard in a lot of other areas, but then I think, you know, the waste management's another area too. That just, that just takes real physical talent. You got to be there, know how to do it, welders. But like, you know, wastewater treatment plant, you don't find a lot of people that know how to work in that kind of a job or in a, or in a water treatment plant, you know, and mixing the chemicals and watching and regulating because we're building a brand new one. But I'm concerned about being able to keep people in there that can continue to help us deliver, you know, quality water to the citizens of Odessa, if that makes any sense.
Oh, it makes perfect sense.
So I, I don't think it's eleven percent, I guess is what I'm saying. But I'm, I'm just zeroing in on one department, but you know, I, I know we've got some other deficiency. deficiencies too, and I think we've got some overages, but, uh, you know, I just see the, I guess, I don't know what you call it, the lower, the lower-paid jobs seem to be hurting the worst, and from what I'm seeing, that's, do you find the same thing?
Yeah, so let me, it's a great question. So let's just say that eleven percent is absolutely real, right? It's what you are. But as the mayor said, usually you do salary increases between three and four percent. So that's the other half of the equation, is that affordability. I can come here and say, you need to add eleven percent to your overall, uh, employee budget, and we're done. And it would do tremendous help for you in those situations. But you've gotta look at the affordability, if you've got three or four percent, then we start to look at the departments and actually attack those industries that we need to go to. So things, trust me, the squeaky wheel, you'll know what they are, right? You know that your water treatment has an issue, but they might, I didn't, I don't have it here memorized, they might not be that bad, per se.
Right. I just use that for an example.
Right, so let's use examples, so you might even, there's a couple ways to deal with, we also talked about, the mayor talked about compression issues, right? So in that three or four percent, we can say, okay, we're gonna take this four percent this year, freeze all increases, but we're gonna take that four percent and attack those issues where we have. We might say, hey, in this first year, we're gonna do all the compression issues, so everybody who's been here for thirty years, who's just barely making nineteen dollars, you know, we can take them up to twenty-one. That's one issue. And then we start to put the right structure in that matches the market, so if the oil companies are paying twenty-five dollars and you're only paying eighteen, you might say, hey, well, one, right, they're gonna leave there, but let's, let's pick our internal number up to twenty, and at least it won't be outright bleeding, it'll be something you can slow it down, right?
Right.
So what we'll provide is a three-to-four-year plan to bring you up, so if you're eleven to twelve percent down, three percent every year attacking now, so hopefully in year three, you won't be twelve percent down, you'll be one percent down. Because that's what we're doing, so we'll take the budget that you can come up with, we'll provide you what a whole budget would be, right? And say, hey, it's gonna cost you fifteen percent of your employee budget, period, if you're gonna do it today. And you'd be like, hey, we ain't, we don't have it, we, we've got three percent. Okay, so then how do you actually pinpoint, the HR department's gonna have to say, okay, we need help here, we need help here, we need help here, let's do this year one, and year two, and year three.
Yeah, I understand, but we just got through doing that with the, with the benefit side of the, of the house.
Right.
And we, I think we did a great job, Yvette did a great job, and we, but that's a lot easier proposition, because you're, you're dealing with, you know,
Right, everybody gets the same.
With a standard set of benefits, and, you know, it's self-funded, so you can float it around, so that's, that's a lot easier than this is.
But Council Thompson, we are planning on coming back in a couple weeks, we'll have more data.
Sure. I understand.
To get closer to what we think those numbers will look like.
Yeah.
But I do think it's important to emphasize what the mayor already identified, I mean, he, he's spot-on. Generally, when you do these full-scale studies, and it's been a significant amount of time since something was done with your structure, it's not gonna be equal across the masses, and so that's one thing, you know, we just like to keep that in the forefront, you know, there're gonna have to be some difficult conversations. So, you know, the supervisors, you know, your leadership teams need to be prepared for those, because it's not gonna be like the benefits, you know, that's, it's the same for all, depending on what you select, but you each get to pick from the same thing, right? You get the same plan, but that's not gonna be the case with this, so that's very important, and, you know, it, he, the mayor said it very correctly, it's not gonna be equal across the board, so.
No, and we gotta be able to afford it, that's the other, that's the other, the other piece of it, so.
Current, I'm sorry, currently, when employees were given that three to four percent raise, annual raise, that percentage is based off of what, a midpoint of a range?
You're talking about what just happened? That's just the cost of living, and it wasn't about any, any salary.
It's based on your current salary.
Current salary. Now, that is a particular tool you could use, that's very good. So if you take, let's say you had the four percent, and we create a classification, uh, structure for you, and everybody, you've got ranges and everything, if you gave everybody an increase based off the midpoint of that range, so those people that are high will get a little bit less, and those people that are really low will get more, and over time, it would fix some issues that you had. That is a tool in a toolbox, but that's something that takes three to four to five years to actually help, but that can be done, that, that, that is a tool in a compensation toolbox first.
We currently don't use midpoints, we currently don't have that
Right, we will.
Sophisticated structure yet.
You will.
But we will.
Yeah, you will, you will.
That's part of the governance you're gonna leave behind.
That's, we're gonna leave that behind, but that's a good
Now, whether we follow is a whole different story.
That is a way of handling it.
Well, I was trying to look at the mathematics of a starting salary, a midpoint, the highest dollar amount, and then that midpoint being where you assess the, uh, the, anyway, Yvette, thank you.
Yeah, that's
I have a, just a point of information, it's on page fourteen, under the different divisions, and just, I'm saying this just to make sure this department gets a fair shake. I was glad to see that animal control was on the top, but unfortunately, it was alphabetical. The, um, in Odessa, we have what is called Animal Services, and that is made of two parts, that would be the shelter and then animal control. So there's two major parts under Animal Services, so I would suggest changing Animal Control to Animal Services to encompass Animal Control and the Animal Shelter.
Okay.
Okay.
And the data was provided in that way, so you may have it out in your
Yeah, this is probably just a general to make it easier, but it's really more Animal Services and Animal Controls, and I think we, Yvette, we do have like, at least ten different job descriptions, but you broke apart the different services, okay?
But we'll take that, sure.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Ten employees, ten different job descriptions.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, it, it happens like that.
Okay. Council, do you have any other questions? All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Looking forward to getting this moving forward.
Yes.
Yvette, when is this coming back to us? Two weeks.
We are hoping to come back on the, for the actual, um, meeting on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
That's our goal.
And we'll have
That'll be the last meeting of the month, okay, I just, I was thinking twenty-ninth, that, this is that weird month, okay?
Right, we'll have an overall costing on that one.
Okay.
So we won't have the classifications yet, but we'll have saying, hey, of all the jobs, here's what it would take to get to a proposed midpoint of that group and become more competitive.
Okay. Or we can hire people. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to, six, discuss the possibility of moving to actuarial determined, uh, contribution method, the City of Odessa Fire and Rescue Retirement Fund, Ms. Mandy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, don't need to stand up, shake it out a little bit, I have another slideshow presentation for you. So today we are here to, um, what is happening? I'm so sorry. To, um, talk about our fire pension, our fireman's pension. So our municipal employees have a TMRS, um, retirement pension plan. Some municipalities have specialized retirement plans specifically for their firemen or the police departments, and so here, of course, we do have the fireman pension. The Odessa Fire Rescue Retirement Fund has approximately four hundred and nine members currently.
Four hundred and what?
Four hundred and nine members of the retirement plan, so that's active employees and retirees. Similar to TMRS, the employee themselves contribute a portion to that retirement plan, and the city also contributes a percentage on their behalf to that retirement plan.
Was, remind, what's the employees' percentage? Do you have that?
Yes, they, uh, contribute sixteen percent, and the city contributes twenty-eight percent.
Okay.
So this fund, um, you all know what a pension plan is, but because we have public listening to us, um, the pension plan is a pool of investments that are managed, um, by a third party, um, so the investment pool right now, as of March thirty-first, has approximately fifty million dollars in it, um, and that leaves us at a thirty-six percent funded ratio, which means that fifty million is thirty-six percent of what we need, of, of the liability that we have, um, based on the four hundred and nine members that are a member, a part of that plan.
Are we seeing that as an average across the city, is that in the middle?
That's very poor.
Okay.
Yes. Um, the goal is to have a, either fully funded or above ninety percent funded pension plan. Pension plans in Texas do struggle, um, we're not the only ones with a low funded ratio. Now, I will say that the pension has made a lot of positive movements, um, over the last several years, many of you know the stories, um, we found ourselves in a bit of a sticky situation, and there were some conversations had with the fireman's pension, with the, the members of Odessa Fire Rescue, and then with city management to figure out how we were going to dig out some of this hole, so, you know, as of today, the, the investment levels themselves have grown, we've seen great returns on those investments. The fund is cash flow positive now, it used to not be, so we're, it's definitely moving in a good direction, and this conversation, um, that we're having today would be another way for us to kinda take a positive step, so just, um, some information on pension accountability and oversight. The Texas Pension Review Board was established in nineteen seventy-nine, and they serve as the Oversight Agency for pensions in Texas. And so, as part of the, the Texas Pension Review Board, there is kind of a subchapter, you could call it, the Texas Local Firefighters Retirement Act, so TELFER is what we call it. The Odessa Fire Retirement Fund is a TELFER fund, and so there are certain rules and regulations that TELFER funds have to follow regarding investments and plan decisions and things like that, um, but most of the, um, decision-making and the administration is left to the local fund, the board of the local fund. So you'll see here on this slide, the breakdown of the board, so we have three Odessa Fire members, and we have a board chair, Eric Brown, board vice chair, Ben Martz, and member, Travis Jones, two citizen roles on this board, one, Kathy McIntyre, and two, Dr. J Kirk. We have Councilwoman Swanner, who is the city council representative on this board, we have myself, who's the finance department representative, and then we have Dan Jones, who is not a member of the board, but he does, um, sit in the city's legal interests in the board meetings, and then Jill Contreras is our plan administrator. So the pension is subject to an annual actuarial evaluation, so what this means is a third-party actuary will come in, they'll evaluate the, all of the current, um, members of the plan, they take into account ages of current firefighters, anticipated retirement dates, they look at mortality rates, all of these things, to tell us, to tell the pension, to tell the city, you have X amount of dollars that you need to fund, um, in this pension to facilitate the retirement of your planned members. And so this is the results as of January first, twenty twenty-four. So as it says up here, city contribution, um, was established via resolution in twenty nineteen at twenty-six percent. In twenty twenty-one, the decision was made to increase it to twenty-eight percent, so that our firemen could come down to sixteen percent, they were paying eighteen percent, um, which is pretty high to come out of their salary, and that's also above their normal cost, so we wanted them to be able to, um, come down to sixteen percent, and the city took on that burden of the extra two percent. So those are the rates, they are fixed, and that is the method that we have right now. You'll see in your screenshot here that we have an actual liability, so total liability of a hundred and forty-three million. We have an unfunded liability of approximately ninety-one million. So that leaves us a funded ratio of thirty-six percent, um, and an amortization period of twenty-two point seven years. That means that the rates that we're contributing right now, we will have paid off this unfunded liability in twenty-two point seven years. And down below, you'll see the contributions that we already talked about. Any questions so far on this slide?
Not yet.
Okay. So the topic at hand today is a fixed-rate contribution method versus an actuarial determined contribution method. So you'll see on the left, under fixed-rate contribution, there are two boxes highlighted. The green box is what the city says, we're going to make the decision to fund at a twenty-eight percent contribution ratio. The red box is what the actuary tells us, okay, based on your determined contribution percentages, you're going to pay back your unfunded liability in twenty-two point seven years. What we are looking at doing, and I'll tell you why we're looking at moving to this model, is moving to a model where the actuary will instead tell us, okay, you have told me that you would like to pay this liability off with twenty, in twenty years, so you need to contribute twenty-seven percent this year, and since it's an annual study that's done, next year it could be twenty-five, the year after it could be thirty-one, right? There are a variety of factors that come into this actuarial evaluation. And so the reason we're wanting to move to this type of method goes back to the pension oversight. The, the Texas Pension Review Board, as the oversight body, has put some regulations into effect, um, they will be changing, starting September first of twenty twenty-five. Pension plans who, um, have a funded ratio of less than sixty-five percent, which we do, um, need to demonstrate a, an amortization of, I believe it's thirty years or less.
Thirty years or less.
Thirty years or less, and so, right now, our funded ratio is at thirty-six percent, right? So we have a long ways to go before we're at what they deem healthy at sixty-five. What we do have going for us is that our amortization is at twenty-two percent, which is well below the thirty-year mark. However, if we were ever to find ourselves in a place in the next handful of years where our amortization creeps above thirty, since we're so far from that sixty-five percent, we would be in trouble, essentially, with the pension review board. When the pension review board identifies that your pension plan is in trouble financially, from a financial and actuarial soundness perspective, that triggers a, um, a soundness restoration plan, which is basically the city and the pension have to work together, kinda like we did all those years ago, we're in a bad spot, what are we gonna do to fix it? So it's essentially a naughty list that nobody wants to be on, because if you're on that naughty list, that means your pension is, is not well-funded, um, and it's not being run properly. And so, if we were to move to an ADC model, this would help us ensure that our pension stays in a healthy place. The city's contribution would change annually, based on whatever the actuary told us that we needed to contribute that year. And in these conversations, you know, when, when we all come to the board meeting for the fire pension, um, we come as fiduciary agents of the fund, we come to discuss issues and topics and find resolutions that are healthy for the fund, but since we also have other hats that we wear, um, some of the questions that we ask is, okay, well, we understand one hundred percent why this is good for the fund, now let's talk about how this could impact the city. And so the actuarial firm for the pension plan put together a model for us, because we wanted to see what the financial impact could be if we moved to this model. And so we'll walk through this together, you'll see on the left, that is the current model that we have right now, and I will say that all of the assumptions that went into this model are from the latest actuarial evaluation. And so on the left, you'll see our current model, and then on the right, you'll see the alternate comparison, so you can see in our current model, of course, we're gonna pay twenty-eight percent annually, every year, and then forecasted on the right, you can see some variation, twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and so what we found from this, the next one is, the next ten years, the swings in these percentages are not drastic. You know, I think the highest that it gets is around thirty-three percent, and right now we're at twenty-eight, and I'll also mention that this specific model factors in a lower rate of return on the investments than the portfolio has actual seen, actually seen, but we wanted to do that to just keep it But we wanted to do that to just keep a conservative frame of mind as we were looking at this. Um, and so on the next slide, I'll show you. This is why we also feel this to be a good plan. Here in twenty forty-eight, so approximately twenty-two point seven years or so, that is when the initial funded liability that we have today of ninety-one million will be paid off. And so what we are looking at is taking on a layered amortization approach. So let's just say today, we have ninety-one million dollars in a liability that we're going to set on an amortization. Okay, we make that decision today. Next year, any unfunded liability that the actuary determines that we have gets set on its own twenty-year amortization, or whatever it is that we decide that proper period is. And so you reach this point in twenty forty-eight where your initial unfunded liability has been paid off. And each year, you've been keeping up with the unfunded liability that you accrue that year and adjusting properly. And so you see this large drop in the contribution that the city has to pay. It goes from thirty-three-ish percent to twelve percent. So that is why you see that big drop there. And so, big picture, and of course, I'll take questions after this. Um, as of the latest PRB data, there are four other TELFER funds in Texas that follow an ADC model. Um, I will say that outside of the state of Texas, this is a very commonly-used methodology, um, and probably within Texas and the private sector as well. So, if we were to move to an ADC model, we would be one of the four cities in Texas to take on this essentially innovative approach to a healthy pension management um plan. Um, secondly, if we were to move to the ADC model, what the forecast is showing is that we would save over this period to twenty sixty-three, um, approximately a hundred and thirty-two million dollars, which is a large dollar amount. And so the reason that we save money is because on the method we have now, we're just contributing twenty-eight percent until the end of time. So the fund reaches a point where it's overly funded and continues to be overly funded. And so this is a way for the city to manage as well the level of cash flow that it is putting into the pension um, in a strategic way, rather than just growing and growing and growing and growing it. Um, so the OFR pension, if we take on this model, they start on a path to reach a healthy funded ratio, which, like I said, we want to see it hit above ninety, and I believe, yeah, around twenty forty-five-ish is when we get into those high eighties. So it's gonna take us a little while, but we have to make the decisions now, right? We have to be forward-thinking. And um, we would like to, uh, oh, and then we would also surpass the sixty-five percent, which is the PRB's determination of healthy um in approximately twenty years or so, so. I will take any questions on this, I know there's a lot of moving pieces here.
Actually, I would like to add, Kaylee, you did a fabulous job. Because two years ago, when I sat on this pension board, we had asked city staff to look at this, and it went on deaf ears. And so, uh, I will also give kudos. Uh, the reason the rest of the pension board is not here is they are at a TELFER conference right, right now. And I had asked this to be put off till October twenty-fourth because I wanted them to have some insight. But, uh, Kaylee was very comfortable in doing this presentation. After looking at this presentation, it's outstanding. And I will say in two thousand nineteen, those of you that were not around, we sat in front of the Pension Review Board, and it was not a good thing. I wasn't on council then. I just got to see all the bad stuff that happened, all the bad publicity we got. It just was bad. And so moving forward, kudos to the Odessa Fire Department for making their changes in two thousand nineteen, when they made a hard decision for the employees to have to up their match because it really dipped into their pay. So that change, um, and the city changes helped make this start heading in the right direction as becoming a healthy fund. Uh, two weeks, was it two weeks ago? I could not go, um, because we had a council meeting. Uh, did you, were you there, Kaye?
Yes.
I know, um, our chief was there. It was an exciting moment, I do recommend watching that. Our pension board is now recognizing the state of Texas of all the good things, and, um, they have asked our board to spearhead lots of things in the future, and I know we're moving in a positive direction. So, I, I believe in this, um, but I'll open it up to any other questions. I just want to tell you that.
No, thank you.
I was scared when you were giving this presentation, and you did a fabulous job explaining it.
Thank you, no, I, I will echo the kudos to our pension board members, to Odessa Fire members. Um, they really took accountability for a problem that wasn't theirs to take accountability for. Um, and they helped dig us out of this hole. We're still digging, right? But we have made so much progress to get the pension to where it is now. And Councilwoman Swanner is right, the Pension Re- Review Board asked Chief Martz to go in front of them and tell our story and tell about all of the good things um that we've done. So I will commend them as well.
And one, one more recommendation. Um, legislation is going to tell us what to do, whether we take action or not in twenty twenty-five. So instead of being reactive, we need to be proactive.
This is September one, right?
September one of twenty twenty-five, yes.
We will have to come into that sixty-five percent.
Yes.
So, let me, let me ask this question. Um, currently, right now, we're at thirty, thirty-six percent.
Mm-hmm.
How long have we been at thirty, uh, thirty-six percent? And where, where were we prior to the changes in twenty nineteen? What was the percentile then in twenty nineteen?
So I don't, that's a great question. Um, I don't know what our funded ratio was at the time. I think last year, we were.
I can say by looking at everything, we have been in the red up until this last year. We have.
So the changes, the changes that took place when the members, the active members.
Stepped up.
They had to, they had to up their percentage. And I remember it's quite substantial. And think about this, as they wind up putting up that percentage into a pension fund to cover those that were retiring, uh, they were doing it with less pay, especially that year to one to five, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Before we wind up being able to do, make those changes. So, you know, trying to make up that ground for them. Um, the other question is, is, uh, there are cities that are, other cities, even neighbor cities that are dealing, that are dealing with this, where they're looking at issuing debt to the tune of a hundred million. So, you're saying there's next significant changes. How will we handle that? Is, you know, because we're basically seeing different percentages, starting in twenty-five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so how do we handle those differences? Or in the course of, of forty years, you're saying that it's a savings yielding, uh, will be in twenty sixty-three of a one thirty-two million, right? In savings?
Yes.
How will we handle those, 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 that difference in the alternating years as it goes up and down? Now, how, how's the council going to do that, do the budget?
Great question. So the, the board, the pension board, has considered moving their fiscal year to align better with ours so that for our budgetary purposes, we can have current actuarial data that says, this is what you need to contribute this year. So we would like to align those timelines to where you have the data you need for the budget retreat.
Exactly, that's exactly my question.
Yes.
So the thing is, is that with, with this new type of system, are we, are we putting more burden on the members?
No.
No.
The burden, um, lies on the city. And so, we're not asking for their contribution to change. Theirs will always be fixed. Uh.
The members.
The members.
Um. Which is currently what, sixteen?
Sixteen percent. Now, there have been some conversations within the pension board and then with city management about evaluating that percentage because right now, they're paying essentially a hundred percent of.
They're what? They're paying for their whole benefit right now.
Yes, what it costs to give them the benefit, they're paying the whole thing. And so, um, one of the things that we can look at is, in the future, maybe bringing it down to fifteen or fourteen.
That was gonna be my question.
So you're saying the eighteen percent, each, Chief Cotton pays eighteen percent, and that funds only his?
He pays six, it's sixteen, yes.
Sixty. Sixty. I didn't mean to give you a pay decrease. So, so we're hoping that one of the key results of this is that we can go into the future with a real possibility to be able to reduce the burden on the member.
Yes, yes.
And we're doing it with less members in twenty nineteen. We have more members paying into it.
Yes, and I know they continue to hire members and want to continue to do that as we grow our fire stations and our forces, so.
Can, can you go back one slide? That one there. Um, do we have a certain date when we have to make a decision on which to go to actualization versus the, um, what we're doing right now? So, I mean, I'm just looking at this, and it shows that in, um, I guess twenty forty-five, the current, our current model will be at ninety-six point five percent funded. And that's at the twenty-eight percent. Can we, at that point, switch over to this actualization?
So the, I think the thinking here is that this is proactive. This is a proactive approach, and like Councilwoman Swanner said, there's likely to be some legislation that comes out of the next session that will require us to do this regardless, uh, potentially, right? It all depends on how it goes. But that was a topic of conversation at the Pension Review Board. They want cities to take on this ADC model, and more specifically, a layered amortization approach.
It just seems that it takes longer to reach that percentage during this, during this, uh, this new method.
So, let's see here. We hit the sixty-five in twenty thirty-seven with a twenty-eight percent, and we hit sixty-five in, I think, twenty forty with the other method. So it's not, it's not that significant of a time difference, and also, these are estimations. The investments have performed higher than what the model on the right is saying that they have. So it could even be before twenty thirty-seven.
Is the pension board limited to, um, a maximum dollar amount that they can invest out of the existing fund balance? I mean, I see the word investment. Do you all have, I mean, you have investments to help grow the fund?
Yes, yes, we do have investments.
Yeah, the, the entire, the entire retirement portfolio is invested.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yes.
Yes.
How much of that? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, there are a lot of moving pieces, but one thing that I just want to emphasize is that this puts us on a healthy path forward. I mean, um, you know, several years ago, when we were in the trouble that we were in, we were at an infinity amortization, so we were never gonna pay off any of our unfunded liability, ever, and the pension was gonna close its doors in eleven years. So this will just help ensure that we never, ever find ourselves in that hot water ever again. Um, and, you know, the pension and the city have worked well together recently in the last, you know, year or so. Um, and this is a good approach for both parties. We wanted to make sure that it benefited both parties and not just one or the other.
Kayla, uh, who's, who's doing the investments for us?
Um, that would be, um, Swanson.
Yeah, Jeff Swanson, he's actually in Florida, so.
Yes, I think it's Swanson Invest, I don't know with the, Swanson Advisory.
Yeah.
And the actuary is Foster and Foster, they're also out of Florida. Florida is known for having the healthiest pensions in the country. They have a lot of regulations in place that promote healthy pensions. And so, those two, the firm and the actuary were key players in all of the positive changes that happened.
Do you have, do you have the idea, surely they got split between bonds and equities, I would assume?
It is, it's, um, I think it's a sixty-forty split, let me see.
I think it's a sixty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what most of them are.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, I have some other questions, but I don't think, they're more, they're more hypothetical. I don't think you can really answer those.
Well, I have one, there's just kind of a, just so I know. The OFR ADC model, that'll probably prove out very successful?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Is that something you would look at comparing to the, like, general Odessa City retirees? The ADC?
You know.
In the future, if that was successful?
That's a good question. I am not as familiar on how TMRS runs their pension. Um, obviously, we're very involved in this one because it's our investments, right? Uh, the TMRS, I'm not sure how they, and they might already have that model, I'm not entirely sure.
And also, that's my question too.
Yeah.
Well, the formula's quite different, I would think.
Yeah.
The, the way they figure the.
The liability.
The benefits, yeah. There were, I know, I know TCDRS has. It's way different, way different model, you know, in the way we pay firemen out, so.
All depends on the benefits.
Let, let me ask this final question here, since, um, in the past, there was a lot of information, disinformation, or lack of information that was getting back to the members. So, we got two members of the, uh, of the pension board here, the rest are at a, at a conference. So, are we gonna get recommendations from the board? Are we gonna redo this again to hear from them? Um, the com, where they're at with comfortable, with current and alternate, alternate?
I think it's whatever council's pleasure is. So if we want to put them on the next work session on October twenty-fourth, I think it's whatever you guys want. I mean, I was hopeful that, I didn't realize they were all gonna be gone. And Chief Cotton and I asked, and he was like, we both preferred them also, also to give their testimony because these guys have been on the, the board longer than myself, and longer than Ms. Banda.
I know for myself, I would like to hear from the board. I'd like to, you know, have them come back, you know, even if we have to do this again. Given an opportunity, I want to be able to hear from them. Uh, they may be able to give us more insight of what, you know, direction we need to, because that may give, give me more comfortable, because as we go down this, 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 regardless of what plan we take, or we're forced, we, regardless, we gotta get to sixty-five percent. You know, you want to do that.
We want to get to.
Whether you're mandated by the state or not, you want to get that. Uh, and the road that every city takes, it's pressed upon them. And so, my overall process of looking beyond the horizon is once you get to that sixty-five, and you hit that basic requirement, you know, can, can dynamics and opinions and visions and goals change? And then say, hey, look, we got to where we got this, while we have to be mandated? You know, what about if someone says, hey, we don't need to do it, eighty, ninety, ninety-five percent? We can't continue these type of infusions, you know? Can that possibly change, you know? A thought process, a change in the culture and leadership, and, because this is gonna be constant changing.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, is there any? I, I, I guess there's no one hundred percent plan or any, uh, criteria that can be put in place that, obviously, you can't go beyond, below the sixty-five percent, but there's no mandate to continue to push forward to that ninety-five. And even though the projections are there, and there's a willingness here today, that's not gonna be the case down in the future.
Which is why it's also beneficial to put this kind of model in place because we have a third-party advising us and telling us, this is pension plan best practice, to reach this, you need to pay this percentage.
And, and, and that happened when the pension started, and it got progressively worse and worse because there was more benefits coming out than there were coming in.
Mm-hmm.
And I heard, when I was on the pension board in ninety-five, I was hearing a lot of horror stories then. And, you know, you, you go forward back to twenty nineteen, and all those horror stories are true. And so, we just don't want history to repeat itself.
Right.
That, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
We don't want to see it, we don't want a, a repeat where we're down here and pass, uh, twenty forty-five, we hit the sixty-five, and then history repeats itself.
Mm-hmm.
You go forward twenty years, and we're back, back in the same boat.
Yeah, well, and the regulatory environment could change by then too, you never know. Maybe by then, the, you know, regulations say you have to be at a hundred, so.
Possible change, and it'll take away that sixty-five percent, it can go both ways.
Mm-hmm. But yes, Chief Martz already texted me that he'll be here the next meeting, so.
They're watching.
They're watching online, so say hello.
They're hearing our questions, and hopefully, they'll, they'll give us some, some more clarity. Council, do we have any more questions on this? Any more direction? Ms. Banda, anything else on this?
No.
All right, thank you very much, great presentation. Thank you for the information, dumbed it down for us, thank you.
No, you did good.
Item seven, executive session, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero.
Item seven, executive session. As authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074A1, personnel matters, the city council may adjourn to executive session two, consider the evaluation applicants for position of associate municipal court judge, and consider the salary for the position of associate municipal court judge. Council, do I have a motion in the second? I have a motion in the second by Councilmember Mata, Councilmember Swannor, all those in favor of indicating a motion of aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, indication the same side? Motion passed, you asked me. We are in executive session. We will be back.